Meeting of the Trinity County Board Supervisors to order. Supervisor Goguen, will you leave us in the light of allegiance?
I will leave you in the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the Islam and with a day justice.
Public comment? This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda or within the consent calendar. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a whole through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer to the subject matter to the appropriate department for follow-up or schedule the matter on a subsequent board agenda. Is there any public comment?
Public comment?
I have no public comment in the room. I have one raised hand.
Alright.
Matthew Jefferson.
Go ahead, Matt.
Hey, this is Matt Jefferson, Coffee Creek. I just wanted to thank Keith for what he said when he quoted us about the processing ordinance. He was correct in what he was saying. I also would just have to say I'm like really, really disappointed if you guys like not listened to anything that me and Roda have said for the past like five years. Because you guys were like confused on when we were talking about the opt-out zones. Like, just like blows my mind. You guys don't understand that we're like bringing up that this is like a discrimination matter. I'm gonna go ahead and quote Nicole Elliott, the Director of the Department of Cannabis Control. Californians have overwhelmingly embraced the legal regulated market. Areas of prohibition challenge this reality and lead to an environment where illegal activity can thrive, threatening consumers' safety and the vision of legalization. Your opt-out zones are illegal and discriminatory. 100%. I have talked to lawyers. The second the cannabis goes federally illegal, you guys will have a huge problem on your hands. Just look at the laws that you have written. And we'll switch the words. Black people can't live north of Weaverville. Black people can't grow food north of Weaverville. Black peo- we don't want black people going to our stores north of Weaverville. We don't want black people going to our schools north of Weaverville. We would prefer if all of you lived south of the tracks in Hayfork. That is flat-out discrimination. Let's quote Jill Cox by saying, "We don't want the flavor of this in our community." 100% banning retail in the downtown district when the Weaverville Chamber of Commerce fully supports it and submitted a letter saying they want it. That is discrimination. Completely blanky- blanketly crossing out processing in Northlake? Like, okay, maybe people don't want cultivation up here, but people are begging for jobs and they will work in this industry. And you have completely denied our area with no findings and nobody's saying anything against it that we can't have processing up here. Because you don't like the flavor? Because you don't like how I look? Or how I smell? Or how I sound? If you're making laws based on the fact that you don't like how we look, smell, or sound, that is illegal and that is discrimination. I wish I didn't have to say this. I've been saying it for five years. It's really, really disappointing that more than half of you guys don't haven't even ever listened to anything I've said. It's, it's very disappointing. I hope you can take your job seriously. And if you're not gonna license us and you're just gonna keep taking our money, shut down the program and tell us to leave. We're tired of it. You've taken everything.
Your time's up.
And yeah, sure, you guys don't respect us and you, you know, we paid.
Time's up. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have another raised hand from Steve.
No comment? You guys aren't even gonna say when I call you out like that? I mean, you could.
Go ahead, Steve.
It's cowardly. Why?
Steve, go ahead.
Well, that's, uh, you know, I had other things that I was gonna say, but I respect Matt a lot. I've seen him, um, really struggle with this program and try to be a, try to be a fair operator. I've struggled in that myself and, and this isn't, you know, I wanted to talk about other stuff during my three minutes, but, um, you know, Matt, Matt's comments really, really hit my heart and, um... You know, I've, I've struggled with this as well. You know, we bring logic and plain, simple talk to the board time and time again and just face roadblock after roadblock. This, this equity program today seems like an amazing opportunity, um, for Trinity County, for the operators, for the residents, for the citizens, uh, to build something sustainable. I hope you guys adopt it.
Can you, uh, this is for time. Item's not on the agenda, so if you have a comment for that, we'll be later.
Okay. I'm veering off into our, uh, there will be time for the public comment on the equity program then?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, uh, then I'll just wrap up here and say once again, uh, you know, thanks, thanks for being there and, uh, this is a hard time for a lot of folks. Thanks.
Adrian Keys?
Hey, thanks. Good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Adrian Keys, Hayfork. I'm feeling a lot the same way. I gotta, uh, I'll start right where Steve did. It's like I've got other things I'd rather be talking about. There's a lot of stuff that we could be doing. It's a lot of progress that we could have made. But it's, it's true. The way that this program is rolled out, I mean, we've given, from the cultivator's perspective after, you know, I got, I got involved in the politics in this county in the winter of 2014, so I can basically say over the last seven years. The first director in charge made it explicitly clear that his intent, this is, uh, Tippit talking about houses on properties, oh yeah, we need to get money from the cultivators. Looking, and then we move into the opt-outs. We, we, the general fund money that we've, the general plan money that we had paid in, in the last six years, three-quarters of the general plan budget. The other quarter is everything the county has raised since 1996. A lot of us out here are extremely upset, not because, well, I guess frankly, not because we didn't expect anything differently, but, but because we're kind of on the, on, on our last legs. And I know, we've gone through this before. I'm not gonna get any sympathy from you. I know that. But what I'd like is honesty and contrition. And I think that when the time comes and we are back on our feet, whether it's inside the program or out, we're probably gonna, as a, as a community here, do some more deep diving into how this is all progressed. So it's likely that we're going to, once we either figure that we are getting our permits or that we're not, find ourselves in a position that we haven't been in before. We've been trying to create an effective program for years and years and years and years. And, you know, it's improved. It's gotten a little bit better, particularly in the last month or so. But there's far too many people hung out to dry right now. I'm talking to so many people, they're like, how do I get out of this nightmare of a county when I've invested everything I own in? You know? They're willing to walk away at a loss because they cannot restart their lives in this climate. I, I don't even know where I'm going right this second, but this is giving, this, the rest of the agenda today, I'm, I'm glad there will be comment on it. I wasn't certain there was because it's not an action item. So I will have more organized comments and thoughts later on, but I just, I will really, I'm right there with, with Matt and Steve. And, and it won't, one way or another, this will come to an end. And it will be very interesting to see what that looks like. Thank you.
Chairman Frazier, we have no additional raised hands and no new chats.
Okay. Do you have public comment? Items not on the agenda?
Yes, based on those, um, comments, I decided to comment. Lisa Wright from Lewiston. You know, kind of the elephant in the room here with the, you know, funding issues that we're having with the cannabis program is the millions of dollars that were spent defending the county's decisions in lawsuits with legal fees and other professional fees. That came out of the cannabis fund. But we all know that fees paid for a program should only benefit the fee payer. Those lawsuits were not for the benefit of the fee payer. They were trying to defend the county for the decisions that the county had made administratively. And I know that you recognize that in the recent $335,000 settlement, um, payment to TAA and you reimburse the fund. However, if you go back to 2019, probably, monthly trial closing balances, you have your financial expert here, you have the attorneys that, the attorney staying here that was involved, you will find that you're, you know, approaching three point some million dollars in fees that were misappropriated and used basically to defend the county for the decisions they made, not to the benefit of the fee payer. It's gonna come up eventually. I would like this board to take the proactive action. I know you don't have money. That's not the problem of these fee payers. The problem is they don't have a functioning program. And money has been spent that could have been spent to have a functioning program in other ways that did not benefit the fee payer. So I'm asking this board, you need to grapple with that. You know, whether it's before, you know, we have new terms or, or whatnot, but it's something that the county has a responsibility for. Everyone sitting here knows about this. So I do ask you to please take action, make it right with the farmers. It's a hard conversation. I know you don't have money, but it's, should not have, money should not have been used that way. Thank you.
Any other public comment in the room? Right. We will close the public comment and move into reports and announcements. Item 1.1, um, reports from department heads.
Good morning, Chair. Supervisors, Drew Livani. I'm a primary compliance specialist and acting division director, cannabis division. I just wanna give you a brief update. I believe it's been about a month since Sean Kong provided an update. We're excited that the equity assessment is being presented today for your consideration and hopefully approval. We have the cannabis retail fees scheduled for the following board meeting on the 18th. And just a quick run-through, we now currently have 360 appendix C checklists submitted. 136 of those are in technical review. And we have 81 compliance memos that we've received from the consultants. I don't know if there are any questions related to cannabis specifically, but I'm here to answer them if you have any. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for you really quickly?
Give a general idea of kind of rate per week that licenses are rolling out at this time?
We're hoping to have another five in the paper this week. And at this point, it mostly hinges on the rate at which we're receiving compliance memos from the consultants, so we are actively working with them to enhance the process and facilitate that objective.
How many can be assigned now?
I believe, let me pull up the numbers. I think as of last week, we have, sorry, 33 cultivation licenses and four CPs.
And how many, you ran eight last week. Are those counted in that?
Those are not counted in that.
So how many do we have ready to, to sign?
I don't know that I have it, I don't know that I have my list set up in that fashion, but I would, I believe it's 16 more than the 33 from the last two weeks.
Okay. And those will be signed this week or?
Uh, the first batch of eight will potentially be signed this week.
Okay, thank you.
Any other department heads? Hearing none. Move on to reports from the county administrative officer.
I have nothing to report this week, Chair.
Alright. Trying quickly, uh, reports from members of the board of supervisors. Supervisor Brown online?
Yes, I am. I have no out-of-county travel and nothing to report.
Alright. Supervisor Goguen?
I have no out-of-county travel. The, uh, TMC meeting, I was supposed to do it to the day after the last board meeting as both the meetings were canceled for the, for the Wednesday and Thursday. And they looked into be rescheduled, they were canceled. So the Department of Interior and Department of Indian Affairs can overlook some of the discussions that we had here and others. So it looks like we'll be bringing that back maybe two or three weeks from now to the TMC and revoting on that. That would be it for me.
Alright. I also had no out-of-county travel, nothing to report. Supervisor Cox?
I have the same as well.
Alright. Supervisor Groves, did you do anything?
Well, it seemed like I did a lot, but, um, no out-of-county travel.
Alright. Well then, do you wanna start us off with our cannabis ad hoc report?
So yeah, again, we've, we've met twice. We are gonna go to, uh, back to the schedule of not having meetings during the, during the planning commission days, but we do have one coming up on the 6th. The, um, the discussions keep going on about, you know, trying to get licensed through. Of course, we have a little transition with Drew stepping in. He seems to be doing a great job or not seems, is doing a great job to fill in. Come up with strategies to get more licensing in the papers, uh, based on our county ordinance as these come out. So as you heard, there's 31 and 16, so 47 through, ready to sign, but we still have 80, so that's leaving around 30-plus to get through the county side of the issue to get signed. The, uh, still, as you heard today, massive frustration kinda striking out in all directions as people are in their harvest and prices are down and, and people are struggling out there. So, um, I don't remember any specifics besides that, Dan.
No, I think our biggest discussion in our last meeting hinged around how to work more efficiently with our consultants to get more of these projects through. I know there has been some tapering off of public involvement at the ad hoc. It's been, there's still people involved, but it's a lot more, um, how we can be more efficient at our level to get things done. So hopefully, um, continue to make improvements and, uh, and get through this process a little quicker, so.
I, I will say we did, uh, as we've staffed up now, that we're looking at cutting some of the other safeguards we had in place that we didn't have personnel such as, uh, Sean Cameron's role. So easing him out of where he was and having that go directly into the department, so that is a streamlining process that was necessary previously, but not necessary today. The thoughts? Yeah, and any, any questions? You know, we could have, over what was discussed earlier today, we could have, uh, long discussions over why there's opt-outs, why there's not, uh, the, the money spent. I do have, uh, a difference of opinion with Ms. Wright on, on the value of the money spent previously that, uh, that was beneficial to the program. Keeping the program shut down four years ago kept people being able to grow with provisional licenses for three years, and that was definitely a benefit to those growers versus shutting the program down four or five years ago and waiting for the secret process. But in fairness, I'm sure she's chomping at the bit to argue with me that, that this would be a long conversation, so that's just my highlights.
Alright. Anyone have any specific questions for the ad hoc? Alright, move on.
Should, should we bring up discussion about the opt-out? Not, not right here, not in length, but at some point, um, there does seem to be some pros and cons to it. And I think if we could be transparent in front of the public and discuss our reasoning and some of the reasons that was brought forward today, it might, uh, be beneficial to everybody, so everybody's on the same page about the opt-outs, why we have and why we won't have.
Well, I think, uh, we've had the, we've had that discussion some in the past and I don't know, personally, I think that the opt-out areas are just a Band-Aid, um, and while we are updating our general plan. Because that's the only effective way to deal with the problem we have. So, um, it's not gonna be a quick fix, but I think that the, the way that that has to be addressed is through the general plan and zoning. But we can, I'm sure we'll have that discussion.
Yeah, I, I agree with Dan that the whole ordinance, this whole thing is, is, uh, an integral part of what we've done. And, uh, you basically would kind of throw out the whole ordinance at this point to do away the opt-outs and cause, you know, as when we did the list and 300 people show up with their signatures and, and, uh, you know, I think it would be counterproductive. It is noteworthy that, that in a time we're being told that nobody can survive and that the business model has collapsed around them, that people are requesting to have more land opened up, which seems counterintuitive. But to me, the only option at this point is, is to keep going forward and let the general plan, uh, function work this out and allow communities to decide. Unlike the argument of racism, counties are duly constitutionally allowed to do land use. You can ban all sorts of businesses within your area. I'll use my great example of a church was banned in downtown Weaverville because it was incompatible with the surrounding areas. So, uh, that, that though a passionate argument is not, is a nonsensical argument when, when it comes to land use and the abilities of communities to decide what they want their towns to look like.
Alright. We can move on to the consent calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon by the board by one roll call motion. If a member of the public has any questions or comments on an item on the consent calendar, they may provide it now. A member of the board or staff may request an item be pulled and considered separately. Do you have any public input on the consent calendar?
We have no public comment in the room, no raised hands or new chats.
Okay. And any board members or staff members have any items that would request be pulled? Hearing none. Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? None.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Goguen?
Aye.
Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Chairman Frazier?
Aye.
Okay. County matters. These items include non-routine or controversial matters and are listed alphabetically by department. A member of the board, staff, or public may request an item be heard out of order. Cannabis, item 3.1, receive a presentation from Cal Poly Humboldt's California Center for Rural Policy regarding the cannabis equity assessment and adopt a resolution which adopts a cannabis equity assessment and the Trinity County Local Equity Program and Program Manual. No impact to general plan.
Uh, Chair, if I may, this is Supervisor Brown. I'll be recusing from this item in form of discussion and action due to my county license 181 and my state license 2181 for cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright.
I am hoping that we have one of the representatives from Cal Poly Humboldt's California Center for Rural Policy on Zoom and they will be able to do some screen sharing and their presentation for us.
Hi, we're here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Whenever you guys are ready, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Frazier. I am Don Arlich, the Executive Director for the California Center for Rural Policy at Cal Poly Humboldt, and I am joined today by Dr. Dominic Forba from Cal Poly Humboldt. We have a brief presentation to share with you, so let me share screen here. So this presentation is, is a brief overview of your cannabis equity assessment and local equity program manual. This, these documents were made possible because the county received a type one, um, grant from the state to produce the equity assessment and program manual. Should your board choose to adopt these documents, it will be, those are necessary documents to make the county eligible for type two funding, which we can explain a little bit more as we go through the presentation. So the purpose of your cannabis equity assessment, it provides a data-informed look at the history of impacts of poverty and criminalization of cannabis on communities in Trinity County. The report provides policy recommendations to guide the county to develop a local equity program. That program can help community members who are impacted by cannabis criminalization transition to the legal cannabis market per the 2018 California Cannabis Equity Act. The report also makes recommendations for future research to help assure equity and diversity in the emerging cannabis industry. diversity in the emerging cannabis industry. This main section is, just to give you a big picture overview of what's in the assessment, is it's got an executive summary, a background, an overview which talks a lot about specifically the county and the history of cannabis criminalization in Trinity County. We have a whole section on current conditions in the county, you know, health status, socioeconomic status, a lot of secondary data and information about the county. The report goes on to talk about barriers to entry for people who are trying to enter the legal industry, enter and participate in the legal industry. And then, as I mentioned on the previous slide, the report makes recommendations for your local equity program. The primary takeaways from your equity assessment are really about Trinity County, the history of cultivation in the county, and the eradication efforts that have impacted communities in the county since the 1970s. A majority of your permittees are small-scale cultivators who are required by ordinance to maintain a home on site, reflecting your county's legacy of homestead cultivation. And then a couple other just demographic points we make about Trinity County is your small population, poverty rates, and access to economic opportunities. We also note the increased migration from among American families over the last decade. The next couple of slides go over what some of the barriers are to entry for applicants and licensees. The first is financial, which is basically the high cost of entry into the legal regulated market. This is particularly true for cultivators for a variety of reasons. All new businesses face financial requirements to enter a new market. Banking, this one is really about limited banking services that are available to cannabis operators and the risks associated with that limited access. The third one is what we classified as administrative technical, and this is really just about obtaining the necessary permits, which requires time, resources, and significant technical knowledge and skills. These are all barriers that operators are facing as they try to transition to the legal market. This is an issue in multiple rural counties that we've produced assessments for. And so cultivation is happening in areas where the infrastructure and it's not really set up to accommodate growth. So that could be roads, it could be access to remote properties, a variety of, a variety of things that have to be mitigated in order to come into compliance. Business acumen, this one is just about the knowledge and resources necessary to run a business, to hire employees, to do accounting, inventory control. And well-resourced and highly educated applicants have significant advantages to succeed because they possess that business acumen. The last one is distrust of government. And this is about the prior criminalization of nonviolent cannabis offenses, which left many communities and individuals with a sense of distrust and fear of government, and also just in general unfamiliarity with government processes and protocols. Your local equity program manual is designed to help applicants and licensees who qualify overcome these barriers. We produced, as part of our contract with you, both a cannabis equity assessment and a local equity program manual. There's language in the manual that indicates that the board or whomever you grant discretion to may make adjustments to that local equity program over time as you roll out the program, if you adopt it, and as you learn about what services are most helpful to your equity applicants and licensees. So I've got a quick overview of what some of the criterion and components are in your program manual today. The first is around specific eligibility criteria that applicants will need to meet in order to qualify for the equity program. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the criteria that were included in your program and are included in other rural equity programs, including a history of cannabis conviction, low income status, residency consideration for those who have resided in the county for a certain amount of time, experience with previous small-scale eradication. You can also, as a county, consider ways that you ensure your equity applicants and licensees can get licensed. And so there's a few different options that are open to the county to consider. And this, by thinking through these options, this will support the county in a successful type II application. The state wants to see that you are trying to make sure those applicants, equity applicants, get licensed. This slide really goes to the previous little bit I did around barriers to entry. So you really want to have specific programs and services in your manual that address and mitigate those barriers that we discussed. And so that has typically, for other jurisdictions, come in the form of financial assistance for equity applicants to navigate various parts of the permitting process, to help them complete necessary infrastructure improvements to comply with local and state regulations, providing assistance for equity applicants to access business skill training, workforce development. And the services you offer, those are the parts of the program you might want to involve over time as you learn more about what services and programs your equity applicants need. And then the last, actually, second-to-last slide, we have a couple data-focused recommendations for the county to consider. One is to, if you are not already, continue to or expand tracking data and demographics of your applicants and licensees so you understand the demographics of that population. It's also worth considering updating your, I already talked about updating your local equity program or LEP as needed as you learn from implementing the program. But there is also the opportunity to update your actual assessment where you can look, as we all know, the industry is rapidly changing. And keeping up with that, so your assessment today is from 2022, things might be very different in 2024. The other opportunity during this update will just give you areas where you can course correct, you can identify unexpected successes or challenges, or expected successes or challenges. And then finally, we just have a couple of county-level recommendations in your assessment that are just big picture, I think, recommendations for the county to consider. One is promoting a diversity of permit types in addition to cultivation, working to ensure that cannabis businesses provide equitable employment opportunities. And if you have local cannabis revenue that can be directed to community reinvestment programming, that can help to rebuild and restore communities impacted by cannabis criminalization. That's the end of the slides. I do have, like I said at the beginning, I have Dr. Dominic Forba with us who worked extensively on your reports. And we are here to answer any questions or tell you more about either of these documents.
Any technical questions before we open the public comment on this item?
Were they going to present, are you going to present on your findings, recommendations, or that's just what you have in the paperwork that you sent us in the document?
The recommendations I partially summarized in the slides, and then the complete draft LEP and CEA are in your packet for review. So it was very high-level summary of, yeah, the extent, the assessment is long, the program manual is shorter. Other thing I could mention, though, is that your equity program manual does also include a review of what other jurisdictions have done, how they've rolled out their equity program, and provides some resource, some resources to the county about jurisdictions that have already implemented these programs. And so hopefully, those are helpful. Those are also in your packet.
Any other questions? All right, I guess we'll open the public comment on item 3.1.
I guess that's all right. Darryl Portland, Weirville. And I'm not here to talk about whether or not there should be an equity program for cannabis growers or that sort of thing. I'm really here to talk about this document. And it's a little bit difficult to get this file even document on the weekend and have to review it with you guys in three minutes. So hopefully, we can get it someplace. First of all, there are a number of factual things in here that are incorrect. Some of them are kind of silly. It says in here that Lake County is on the Trinity County southern border. It says in here that Hayford was once the county's seat at Weirville, or Trinity County. Not so. So there's a lot of that kind of stuff that kind of just says, well, what's the, where is this research coming from and that sort of thing. And somebody who works at the Historical Society now and does research on historical events like the Chinese in Trinity County and the gold dredges in Trinity County, you have to rely on these kinds of documents to come up with knowing what's going on. And if somebody pulled this up and said, gee, this is what happened in Trinity County in the 1970s and the 80s and 90s, they would be misguided a little bit. I'll talk a little bit about, there's a number of things in here about a fellow named B. E. Smith. And in here, it talks about somebody quoted as saying, then he used to be questioned law enforcement, it says, he was identified as, then he's historical significant identifier, key legacy cannabis culver in the area. He was an old-timer who wanted to mind his own business in the mountains. He was very nice. He was very nice. You know, became good friends. But not because he was trying to mind his own business. Basically, when, there was a recall event for Jim Smith, and he was very active and tried to solicit that recall, he actually ran for supervisor against Jim Smith in that recall event. He ran for sheriff twice. This is a little article in the paper showing him as a candidate for sheriff. He never became a candidate sheriff, for sheriff, because he never provided the requirements of being a sheriff. But in both times, I was happen to be the elections official at that time, and both times, he actually filed suit to say he could be on the ballot and lost in both of those cases. So, and in here, it talks about, this goes back to the 1990s, when the medical cannabis was, and B. E. was told the board that he was going to grow 1,000 plants because he thought that the medical cannabis was going to be something useful. He actually did that, but he grew the plants on federal land because he wanted to be arrested. He wanted to be in court because he was challenging that the laws were being used. So to say he was minding those businesses is not true. And so to me, that's as well, if that's the case of something we know about, are there other events like that in here in my time as president? Thank you.
Lisa Wright-Lewisson, I think that an equity program for Trinity County is way overdue. I know one's been in place in Humboldt for a few years, I believe, and provided some significant grant funding that's enabled their farmers to kind of sustain, you know, some of the challenges of the legal market and changing conditions and so on. So I have not had the opportunity to delve into the details of the report, but I certainly encourage you to proceed in this deliberation and establishment of an equity program. I would ask that you pay particular attention to the administration of that, how that will be funded, and who will be responsible for that, to make sure that we don't have any, you know, questions over how the program is being administered and money spent. So I would ask you to pay extra particular attention, given the questions in the past about the cannabis program's use of funds. Thank you.
And the public comment?
How, Adrian Keys?
Good morning again, Supervisors. Thanks again. First, I really want to thank Darryl. I sure wish we could have a whole meeting that was just dedicated to the history of Trinity County. I think it's fascinating. Darryl always, you know, he's got the real story. So thank you, Darryl. I did take the time to read through this whole thing pretty thoroughly. There were definitely a few, a few nicks ups, like the Lake County thing, or, you know, I would consider Denny to be in the northwest of the county, not the northeast, but those are largely immaterial. Some of the factual stuff Darryl got into, I actually can't speak to while I wasn't here. I strongly appreciate the environmental leaning in the document overall. It's been a thing that I've said for many years in this context, that our environment's really been hammered through the prohibition of cannabis. Had it not been for the prohibition of cannabis, none of this would have ever happened. So there's that. I would like to see as far as, I suppose it would be called the deliverables of the program down the road, that farms that choose to pursue environmental service marks like the OCal, the Organic Equivalent Program in the state, or Sun and Earth, or there's a few certifications out there that go much deeper than the National Organic Program. I think farms that pursue those should get some special attention and possibly beyond just compensation for the, for the cost of those programs. There's the talk about the additional license types and access to them. I think that's a very, very important key element at this point. Getting rid of the 300 pound of other people's material in a microbusiness would take the lid off of the microbusiness license that would allow that sort of smaller-scale vertical integration and allow products to be manufactured in Trinity County much, much easier. I would also like to see during the implementation that farms who do pursue these environmental service marks possibly could get grant money that would allow them to achieve that sort of vertical integration on some scale. And as far as other counties and their administration of the program, there's been a lot of hiccups in other counties. They were kind of typecasting the whole program first time around. A lot of bureaucratic staff who's kept the money from rolling out, some jurisdictions are at least slowed it down dramatically. Some of those have been just the difficulty of implementing the program. Some have been because there are people in the local governments who would just assume not to see this happen. And I do hope that our county can do better than that. not to see this happen, and I do hope that our county can do better than that. But I believe at this point, like, environmentalism and economy are directly intertwined globally, and so I would like to see that sort of support for environmentally friendly practices and vertical integration. Thank you.
I have Steve L.
Hi, Board. Thanks for taking the time to review this, and thanks for the Cal Poly votes for putting it together. I hope we get this passed and rolling today. I think it's essential to help shore up what's a tough industry right now. I want to, you know, I think part of this helps level the playing field so that we don't all just end up with, you know, a couple of big Walmart-sized companies running this, you know, multi-billion-dollar industry in the state when that Trinity County can have a viable economic base. You know, we're not able to access all of the benefits that other, every other type of agriculture gets. Some USDA programs are very helpful for every other type of agriculture, and there's just dozens and dozens of programs that can help farmers. I think one of the most important aspects I want to bring to your attention is in Exhibit B., page 11, number 2, under program administration, that we have an opportunity to set up a entity that administrates this equity program. I think that the Board of Supervisors and the Cannabis Division are very overwhelmed and time-challenged. I would love to see a, an entity set up specifically to administer this program, take some of the burden off Cannabis Division and the Board of Supervisors, and include some stakeholders to help administer this program and to see that it's, you know, doled out equitably, and to bring reports to the Board so that the Board can continue all the other important business of the county. So please consider developing some kind of entity that could administer this program. Thanks so much for your time.
Hi, good morning, Chair, Supervisors, Tyler Hudson. And I was also advocating for a discussion and hopefully advancement or path of this today. I also believe that it, in some ways, levels the playing field for the small cultivators in Trinity County as other jurisdictions roll out programs like this. It really is beneficial for a business climate to have access to that if the public has that do it. I don't know for sure what types of opposition there will be to it, merely on principle, maybe, as on practical, but, you know, I will say that the state has already, you know, levied a lot of taxes on this industry and is basically using this program to redistribute that. I would be a fan of not paying the taxes in the first place for a business climate, but up the dates in California, I think that this could have a real beneficial impact on small businesses within Trinity County having a vote. I just hope that can be seen for the positives that it will have for the meaningful.
I thought I'd just see Matt's hand raise a hand. Matt?
The fir-, I want to thank the first speaker. I did not remember the gentleman's name, but I completely agree with everything he said, and there was just like quite a few things in there that just weren't really correct. Just seemed like it was rushed. And just like the only concern that I see in it is that, maybe I didn't read this thoroughly enough, but it seems very vaguely worded to say that there will be assistance to communities that were impacted by illegal cannabis cultivation. From what I've seen over the past seven years, six years, whatever it is of this program, that makes me think that 90% of the money's going to go to Northlake, and it's not going to help any cultivators. So hopefully, I'm just reading this completely incorrectly, but it doesn't necessarily seem like it's helping people that are trying to get licensed. It seems like it's pretty vaguely worded to pass the money around to any community impacted by illegal cultivation. But thank you. Have a good day.
I have no new chats and no raised hands.
All right. I guess with that, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the Board. I don't know.
Or Dominic?
Yes, we're both still here.
Can one of you speak to the last comment that was made, concerned that most of the money will just go to a certain area, perhaps of the county that's been impacted by illegal cultivation versus helping people get licensed?
Dominic?
Yes, I can, yeah, I can take that one. I'm not sure where that impression is coming from. The vagueness of the wording, I'm not sure what part of the document he's quoting from, but the broad question that comes from GoBiz is vague. It's communities impacted by cannabis criminalization. However, this program can only go to people who are, who are, who have or are seeking to get licenses in California's regulated system. So I don't know where that's necessarily coming from. That said, there are probably knock-on effects that will help communities in, especially ones around, if legal cannabis cultivators get things like water storage, for example, that will help issues with water in communities, right? So there will be structural benefits to types of assistance that are especially about environmental impacts. But the money has to go to people with licenses who are attempting to get licenses, and let's make sure that's really, really, really clear.
Okay. So a question as well. Is there a way to clean up the inaccuracies of some of the historical points that our first commenter pointed out without significantly delaying the adoption of the document as a whole?
Yes, absolutely. And first, let me say that I'm mortified by the geography mistakes, as I am a geographer. Not sure how they got in there necessarily, but they're there and I own them. So those are pretty easy to correct. The, you know, the Denny in the northeast, like, I don't remember ever thinking it was in the northeast, but somehow that's what got written down. And then the lake, especially the lake question, that was more about like that region, really, going down to Lake and in northern Mendocino, but as it was written, obviously, it says lake borders Trinity County, and that is incorrect, and that's easy to fix. And this can, this can happen very quickly if the Board basically makes, you know, they're passing contingent upon fixing basic factual errors that are identified here in this hearing or otherwise. So, you know, folks had had a chance to review it, but it's a long document, tough to catch necessarily everything, but, Don, correct me if I'm wrong, the Board can pass the assessment, you know, with required revisions, right, which include fixing anything that might be incorrect. And really appreciate that first speaker's historical perspective. Wish we'd been able to actually talk to him because, you know, part of that process is really getting deeper history, and I really enjoy that process and talking to anybody who can help me make it clear. Thank you.
Would we be able to clean up more things? So in other words, the speaker only had three minutes to identify just a short list of items, but there are more than that? So if we pass a contingent upon fixing errors, how specific do we have to be about that list of errors?
I think if you made a contingent upon fixing historical and geographic errors, not substance of the program itself.
Okay. Beautiful. Thanks.
Chair, do we need a motion before we discuss?
Yes, unless you have technical questions.
No. All right, with that, I would propose to accept this, understanding that there needs to be historical and geographical amendments to the document.
I would second.
I will second. With that, we can jump into some discussion.
I guess I have on page 70. So under Finding 7, Recommendations, and I understand these are just, can be directed to, but, and we're not really making commitment, but I would like to see us add something that, through my time on the school board, that I saw there is definitely a negative impact from cannabis onto our youth, and a lot of the youth saw this as a high-dollar place to go and not finish their education. And, you know, I remember youth telling teachers that, "Next year, I'm going to make twice as much as you do a teacher, and so why do I need to graduate, or why do I need to study?" So I would like to see something in their potential focus areas as adult education or people to come back and get their education. Besides that, just one little pet peeve of mine, my big question is, how do we administer this? We don't have the resources today by any department that I see, unless cannabis is going to get up and tell me they have a big plan for this. How, what are we going to do moving forward? I don't want us to sit here and say, "Yeah, good job for us. We have this pot of money," and then it sits, and we have frustrated industry, and our answer back to them is we don't have the ability to do anything about it. So what's the plan there, guys?
Keith, I'm assuming you'd like me to respond to your question?
Anybody. I assume that this discussion is going on internally.
So I think, looking at the two documents, the one that is probably more important in terms of the implementation of the program is the manual, and it does kind of lay out a broad framework for how we would implement it. I do believe that although we are, you could say understaffed at the moment, I do believe we could take this on and through a series of community workshops, get sufficient community input to understand what would best benefit the cultivators in the program, and also in coordinating with the Grants Department. I do believe we would be able to roll this program out and have it be functional without too huge of an additional workload.
So, we're, we've been struggling to get things accomplished in the Cannabis Department, and we have staffed up, so I haven't had a good feel of what our capabilities are yet. But, so you would be dedicating a person in the Cannabis Division to then work with Grants Department?
As I understand, the way that the allocations could potentially go, we may be allocating portions or fractions of individuals towards the accomplishment of the program and all the goals. One of the benefits of receiving the funding is that we will be able to utilize up to 10% of the grant funds to administer the program. So assuming that we were to get, you know, a decent round of funding, then we would have additional resources available to the department to potentially hire someone specifically to administer the grant program, or at least offset, you know, that staff load.
So is the proposal to keep that Grants person within Cannabis, or would that person be under the Grants Department?
I suppose we need to have further discussions with the Grants Department. As I understand it, they're happy to facilitate document preparation and things of that nature, but I imagine that it would be preferable to keep that in-house and/or some combination between Cannabis Division staff and, you know, community support to oversee the implementation of the manual.
I, I'd really like to, at some point soon, get a really laid-out plan of, basically, we would have to make a new allocation, or maybe not. We need to have a, you know, coordination between Grants and you guys.
And so the coordination between the Grants Department and Cannabis Division is basically has been specified in the first round of funding that paid for the equity assessment and manual to be prepared, and so as part of that, we do have additional resources still available to do community outreach and programs to get community input. And then we would need to submit a request for funding before the end of the year, so at this point, my goal would be to have that funding request completed and submitted to the state by mid-November.
Okay. Lenny, do you have any comments? Because it's going to drop on you in the end.
Well, I agree with Drew. I think it's going to require us to get together and develop an implementation plan to bring to you, because we do want everyone to be successful, and I think once we work together and utilize all, any resources we have, we can, we can do that.
Well, I guess from my point of view, it, I'm sorry, I'm almost done. From my point of view, that this can't impact any ability to get out licenses, get the secret process going, and get, and slow up any process that we are behind on.
I agree.
And we need this to be efficient, and, you know, other counties have run into problems not being organized enough, and maybe we can learn from those, but the buck's going to have to stop with somebody in this, and to me, that's, you guys are going to have to lay that out.
Yeah, I definitely see, this document only provides a lot of area of improvement, both in service delivery and internal processes, so we can review that and do our best to implement the best service delivery.
All right, thank you.
Drew, one last question. You mentioned a couple times, public relations, public input, as you spoke. Do you, do you plan on having a stakeholders group involved in this?
I would love to see that happen. I'm not sure on the technical procedural process at the moment. If Board wishes to, you know, give that directive as to what we need to do to accomplish that, I would appreciate it, and if not, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, love to have one. While you're still up there, I'll jump one here or two. I was planning to discuss this with the Board, and you're probably the one to answer anyway, though. In the, all right, exhibit B., section 3- In the Exhibit B, Section 3, Program Access Prioritization and Ratios Sections, kind of give me pause where it's saying consider prioritizing permits for equity applicants and consider mandating that 50% of all future licenses be provided to equity applicants. With the number of applicants we already have in the queue and the prioritization that we've already done with the applicants in that queue, is there any way we can even implement those without slowing down what we've already got?
From the program manual, I mean, there's obviously a broad range of recommendations. If you look at one of those recommendations being the individuals that, you know, as it refers to in the document, were regratualized due to the TAA lawsuit settlement and subsequent court order, essentially the way that we have things prioritized presently is already in alignment with that because we have prioritized those applicants that received the urgency ordinance extension letter. And so that, there wouldn't be any reprioritization in terms of the appendixy review process if that's where you're.
Okay, and then the other concern I had with that was the ratios where future licenses be provided to equity license holders. I don't know how many applicant, applications are in, already have been submitted that don't have appendixes or whatever, those placeholders that you guys have, but to pick the ones that are equity applicants, you may be throwing everybody else completely out of the program. I'm not sure how that will work, so that was just a concern I had reading through that.
And to that second concern, I could grab the numbers that I have. I don't have them memorized unfortunately, but essentially there's, you know, 100-plus slots open if you're doing the tally from what we have received as submitted appendixy documents. We certainly could at the, you know, directive of the board, figure out how to either encourage and, you know, prioritize applications from those that have been identified as equity applicants alternatively, you know, within the broad scope of recommendations. I didn't read that as a top priority in terms of implementing the manual.
Okay.
Ed Presley, Interim Deputy Director of Building and Planning. Just a couple of things I would like to add to this and that is, you know, as much as we do like coming here and wanting to receive direction of the board, we do have capability making these decisions on our own and reviewing them with you before anything is implemented. But another thing to Supervisor Groves' question, the way I see this equity grant is it's going to dovetail into what we already do on a daily basis anyways. So I don't really see there's going to be a heck of a lot of difference on what we do on a normally, on a normal basis with just increasing the funding and help to the cannabis growers who have been struggling. To the other effect of it, I think we need to consider and think about, everyone in our program to begin with, from left to right, the full spectrum, if we're thinking they're not going to be approved into the equity program, I think we're kind of missing what the whole equity assessment was about. I would probably say 80, 90, 100% of the people that are in the program, maybe not 100, but maybe 95%, probably fall right in the middle of the goalpost of what this equity program can actually do for Trinity County. So it is about bringing extra money into the county, but it's about getting these businesses through, you know, business acumen, getting them through so that they know how to market, how they know how to manage their own books and become viable businesses. I mean, the economic development aspect of this is just, it's huge. You know, we don't ever want to cut all our arrows in one quiver, but at the same time, this is something that's just been missed out on because it's been kind of pushed to the side and not allowed to really progress due to a lack of funding and a lack of staffing for the cannabis division, but here we are now and we have this great opportunity. So I just wanted to add that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I can't help myself, I'm sorry. In theory, I find a lot of this offensive to how this country should operate and I find it offensive towards individuals for 40 years have watched others gain large benefits by acting illegally and how they are in the same struggles as the rest of us. So, and I also find when we start as a country and a society pinning down equity based on reverse.
Equity out, that is an opportunity.
On reverse discrimination or other issues, I find it very sad that our country has gone away from that. But with that said, I will vote for this based on the fact that this will benefit many people that are trying, that have been caught in this, that don't understand the problems with becoming a legal entity in the state of California like the rest of us have fought for over years. So, but I just had to put that on the record. Thank you.
I don't have any fundamental questions. I just wanted to thank Drew and Ed for giving us a comprehensive answer to these questions, being prepared and ready today. It's nice to see that all the questions that we had were answered. We've come out of this with a pretty well thought out and inclusive what to think about this. And just thank both you guys for being here and giving us the information we needed so we don't have to drag this out any longer. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Well, I gotta say, I do have issue with the entire process of this. I mean, from the time we started, I've had issues with this because it does seem to me to be kind of a, I don't know, it's just wrong to go in. To me, the people that are going through the legal process right now have already done what you do in America when you're being trashed by laws. You don't like the law, you change the law. I think that it's been a long, slow process, but at the same time, I mean, we have people that aren't in the cannabis industry that have been also adversely impacted by government and a lot of other aspects of rural living where, I mean, the whole county has been affected positively and negatively by the war on drugs. So I do have a bit of an issue with the grant funding for, I mean, it wasn't very long ago, we would hear people talking about how the war on drugs was the biggest moneymaker for the cannabis industry because, and now, so I mean, I struggle. I really do struggle with this entire equity thing. I said from the get-go, I prefer equity to mean built up value in your home, not that everybody gets the same outcome in life. So I do, I really do struggle with this and I just want to make that perfectly clear that I think that a lot of this is, Tyler Thompson said it, I think, the best, the state of California is taxing people and redistributing that money so the corporate growers can pay for the little guys, but I mean, I just think it's not the greatest drought to take with any business. I know, I've been on the ad hoc for long enough to know that yes, these people are really struggling. So are other businesses and people who have jumped into business that didn't know how to run a business in any industry have went out of business. So there's, our, our, this whole equity concept to me is inequitable. It seems outrageous to me, but that said, I'll get off my soapbox. Not a big fan of equity. Any other input before we call a vote?
The only thing I would say is that I wish that there had been a little more broad spectrum of input, you know, considering our historians and not just the, not just the little facts that we're going to fix, but, you know, I just, I struggled when I was reading it just because I feel like it's painting, it's painting history, not from, I don't feel like it's painting it down the middle of a perspective. I feel like the perspective is pretty weighted and it almost seems like we're writing a document in order to qualify for some money. From that standpoint, you know, it's one of those things that if the state of California is going to throw money out there anyway, I'm more than happy to put a bucket in a position to receive that. If somebody's going to get it, then may as well yes. But there are pieces of it that I just feel like, I just wish that the input had been a little broader so that the overall feeling when you're done reading it felt like, yeah, 20 years from now, if somebody picks up this document and reads, they're going to get an accurate perspective of history and, so that's my issue. I agree with your feeling on the whole equity thing. It seems like it's coming at us every place all the time. That being said, there have been so many missteps that have really made the growing community just pivot at every turn in ways that have been really difficult. And so fixing that in some way does seem, I do feel like that has been really, really hard. So.
So I guess just to speak to Dan's part about, you know, help getting in business and all that, I think for most businesses that there is programs to help you get into business, whether it's your first business startup business, you know, there is, you know, government subsidy and help to start up whatever business it may be. So I don't think this is the only business that there's an equity type situation for. I think that almost all businesses, there is something out there to help the small business owner or the first business owner, you know, get off the ground and get his business running. So, you know, I see this as the same thing as the help to the people who are in our community who are struggling right now.
All right, go ahead. Maybe you can go ahead and call for the vote, it looks like.
Supervisor Cox?
Aye.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
Supervisor Gogan?
Aye.
Chairman Fraser?
No. And that is a no really, if you reflect on our cannabis cultivators, that is simply the fact that I think the state of California is doing this wrong. Are we really done at 10:20 and four? All right. So I will read out the closed session and then we will be adjourned. Closed session, item 4.1, Government Code, Section 5495, 4.5C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation, Number of Cases, Three, Mines versus Trinity County et al., Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 20CB036, Mines versus Trinity County and Kemp-Hunter, Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 20CB082, and Trinity Alps Farms Inc. et al. versus Trinity County et al., Trinity County Superior Court Case Number 21CB008. Do you have any public comment on closed session?
Chair, Board, Lisa Wright-Lewis, and again, just a comment that going back to how these legal fees are being paid in defending, clearly those are related to cannabis. I am hopeful that these are, this payment of the legal fees for the defense because cannabis is in the word is not coming out of fee payer dollars. So I would like some follow-up on that and some clarification that we are not having the farmers pay for the defense of any case that happens to be cannabis related. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right?
I have no raised hands, no to jump.
All right.
Did you do your reporting out at the end of the special board meeting after I had to jump off? You had said two meetings ago that there was some reporting out of past closed sessions that hadn't taken place yet.
It's been a while since we reported on a closed session, so.
You're not prepared.
I'm not prepared to do, I don't know exactly.
Which meeting are you referring to?
I think it's been.
Two meetings ago, we had said at the end, hey, reporting out hasn't been happening and we need some sort of the trigger to make sure it does and we said, okay, we'll use the special meeting.
And we're still working on getting clarification on whether or not there's a legal requirement to verbally report out at the next following meeting or if by having it on our minutes and once we get caught up, then there, the report out from closed session is listed on our minutes when we do them. And once we're caught up, they will be out there and available for review. So I'm still working on that clarification on if there's a legal requirement for us to verbally report out or not and we will have some conclusion before the next board meeting.
If we're going to gather that to be able to put it in the minutes, which is wonderful, I would like to see us go ahead and verbally say it is.
Again, I don't have a problem verbally saying it. I would just like to be prepared to do it and make sure that I report out what needs to be reported out and nothing else. So, yeah, I don't want to jump into anything, right? Off the clock.
I don't have a strategy to.
All right. So with that, we will adjourn and I guess we'll take a short recess and let's come back at like 10:35 and start our closed session because.
Chair, if you may, this is Supervisor Brown. Do I need to, I'll be recusing from those items. Do you want me to come back at 10:30 after you announce the items specifically?
No, I thought, I had expected that you would probably have already went to do something else since you were not going to be involved with the rest of the agenda when you recuse from item 3.1. So duly noted that you're going to be recusing and you don't have to come back and tell us.
All right, I'll go check with legal, but thank you.
All right. All right. Perfect.